Which will be led by Girl Scout Troop 310 from St. Mary's Catholic School. Troop Leader Kalida Moinstar and Assistant Troop Leader... Girls, please come forward, but at first we will have a moment of silence, then followed by the flagged leaders which will be led by Troop 310. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a proclamation recognizing the NCAA Division One Indoor Track and Fields that helped make this happen, and I just need to say that we had this year two of the top and center. And whereas through the collaborative partnership between the City of Albuquerque Parks and Recreation Department, the Albuquerque Convention, this event was a huge success. And whereas hosting this prestigious national championship brings positive attention to the City of Albuquerque, and Shisko Athletics Department secured the bid to host the 2014 NCAA Men and Women's Indoor Track and Field Division One B reports that this event brought 1,600 attendees, 3,800 room nights, generating a million dollars for 520 athletes from 134 different schools during the NCAA event. And whereas the City of Albuquerque Parks and Recreation Department has maintained and supported the indoor track for a period of nine years and continue to keep it, and the professional council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque hereby recognizes the NCAA Division One Indoor Trac and Field here that made it possible. So, thank you all very much for all your participation. It's amazing when all these entities work together.
And it brought different parts of the community together, and for me being out of college for eight years...
I help you guys a lot when I'm being a volunteer, you guys. Thank you for visiting, thank you for holding us out. Thank you.
I've been with you for the past thirteen years, and we've been doing very successfully with Walmart, and we just love you guys. So, the City of Albuquerque hereby recognizes Alusin Chris Baca for his dedication, commitment, leadership, brilliance, and sacrifice to New Mexico's children and youth and families. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much for those great and kind words. I'm truly humbled. Nobody ever knows, you know, what your career path is going to be, and I certainly did not know what my career path was going to be forty-one years ago. I thought I was just going to, you know, get my first job out of college and stay there for a couple of years and go on to other bigger and better things, but there were no bigger and better things than actually working in your community and working with families and children that need just a bit of assistance to make it on to bigger and better things for themselves. So, and as usual, none of this is done by yourself alone. Besides me is my wife of soon-to-be thirty-nine years, a murdered fifty years ago.
White and blue, our country is in distress. This militarized police department that we have here is a national problem. I'd like to introduce a friend of mine and a brother, his name's Royal Ball, Mr. Cipriano Royal Ball, and we've got a Liberty Zone idea here, and he's going to kind of give you a quick little rundown on it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Cipriano Royal Ball, and I just want to share a few little comments with you. New Mexico liberty. Inform the people and our public servants of the original state constitution, the republic. Republic and democracy are two very different forms of government. Republic, a government of the people. The reason for...
...to train other USians, largely people of color and of low income, to become professional hired killers, to murder on command with no conscience, would be more evil, more selfish. I have paid no federal income tax for thirty-five years. I refuse, I refuse to pay to murder moms, dads, and children.
Thanks, this problem. Before you do it expeditiously, I had a boss once who used to caution me, a very senior boss. He said, "Do it quickly, but don't hurry." And I fear that's what we're doing here, is hurrying. So, the consequences may not be well understood. I solicit that you defer both of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Shirley?
And I do support item P-41-1 on the agenda, the ballot measure amending the city charter to require advice and approval of the city council regarding appointments. Please chief, thank you.
Just asking if I redone the death and not anything on what I brought before you that you guys failed to always ask me a question on?
I'm going to ask that everybody please cooperate, or not I am going to call for a recess. So, let's go and proceed. Our next speaker is Mike Gomez, followed by Mary Jope, followed by Diana Vargas, followed by Ellen Wagner, followed by Raymond Powell. And again, please, if you would respect the individuals that are at the podium speaking, please. You're allowed two minutes, and when you applaud, you're taking it third time at the same time. Scott, Scott, proceed.
There you go again, Harris. Looking at that iPad again while people are talking. That's just a wonderful thing, huh? That's just a wonderful thing. You don't care about anybody who doesn't make over $200,000 a year, do you, huh? You don't give a fuck, you know? Just, just look at these signs, huh? You remember the time that you called the cops on me because I had a sign behind me, huh? You remember that, two years ago, huh? You remember that. I gave it to Channel 13, they remembered that, huh? Huh? Now look at the signs, huh? Now look at them. You're a disgrace. All I gotta say is, you, Mr. Harris, you didn't want the DOJ to come in.
Go with him, go for it, please.
You, you, Ms. Judy Jones, didn't want the DOJ to come in. And what I'm really, really upset about is Mr. Winter. He didn't want the DOJ to come in. He deals with poor kids. He is an upper echelon of APS, and he didn't want the DOJ to come in. What is it? Poor kids? Are you up with the Quavo all the time or something, with the rich kids or something? What about Rio Grande, huh? What about West Mesa? Huh? You didn't represent them when you didn't vote the DOJ to come in? Where's the mayor, huh? Where is the mayor, also? Where is the mayor? He's such a coward. He's such a coward, and he hires this, this police, so-called police chief, Mr. Eden Gordon. I can't even call him Chief Eden. He's a disgrace. They didn't even let him talk at the last, uh, press conference because he doesn't know how to talk. He doesn't know how to do anything except to say yes to the mayor, yes to Susanna Martinez, yes to Jay McCloskey, yes to all the political money. That's what he says to, and all you folks, you've got to start to do something. We've been telling you for years.
Mary Jope, followed by Diana Vargas, followed by Raymond Powell. Mr. President, can I make a brief comment?
On my computer right here is the U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division, April 10, 2014, the report. That's what I'm reading, for those who want to know. And any of you are looking, any of you not, when I hold up signs, I just want to make sure that the person who's speaking to us agrees that that's appropriate. I'll be happy to write a short speech.
Let's go and proceed. Mary Jope, proceed, thank you.
Good evening, President Sanchez, Madam Chair, Councilwoman. My name is Mary Jope. I'm here in solidarity with my city, state, and nation to end police violence.
When will you pass an ordinance prohibiting the mayor from negotiating an APOA contract that puts limitations on police oversight? You could easily overrule the city attorney's outrageous legal opinions that got oversight. All you have to do, the gentleman before me, gave quite a few avenues, I think, that are worth pursuing, so I hope that some of you are going to at least hear that and maybe take some time out of your job.
To kill more people and to do it more frequently, a homeless female teenager and now an African-American veteran suffering from mental illness. In the recent ABD killing of Armand Martin, SWAT engaged in precisely the tactics and procedures for which DOJ criticized it as escalating rather than de-escalating conflict. Counselor Harris, that's on page thirty-five, if you're reading along with me. SWAT is particularly deficient, noted the DOJ, at resolving confrontations involving barricaded subjects, suicidal subjects, and subjects in crisis. These are criminal deficiencies. Even after put on notice by DOJ, Mayor Berry and Chief Eden continue to allow this department to engage in unconstitutional policing. This is a police department that criminally and willfully operates under rules of engagement that produce unjust outcomes that lead to tragic deaths. We demand justice for the families. We demand that ABD use without cam videos or they be fired. We demand independent police oversight with final authority to discipline. We demand that these officers involved in unjust shootings be indicted. We demand that officers engaged in the unjustified use of force be disarmed. We demand that ABD go into receivership. The city council here is viewed by the people as the first line in seeking justice, but it refuses to courageously confront this problem. It continues, and so tonight, in the true spirit of democracy, and with the seriousness to which it deserves, and with the power given to us by the people of New Mexico and its court of law, we now serve a people's warrant for arrest on Albuquerque Police Chief Gordon Eden. He is charged with accessory. Gordon Eden, you have the right to remain silent. Anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. You have the right to the attorney. Mr. Eden, if you cannot afford an attorney, what will we provide for you?
You are trying to attack her!
And Councilor Sanchez, Council President Sanchez, we are going to take a five-minute recess. No, Council President Sanchez, we're not leaving this podium. We're leaving this podium unchallenged and unbound in these charges. We're not leaving, we're not leaving this podium. I am not leaving this podium. You are, you are walking away from justice. You are walking away from justice. You are... We will leave after five minutes. We will be here too, and we will be here too.
No justice, no peace.
No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. The people, united, will never be divided. United, will never be divided. The people, 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 united, will never be divided.
Thank you for staying, Councilman Agüino. Councilwoman Penia, no justice, no peace.
No justice, no peace. No justice...
When we ask for justice, they run out of words. No justice, no peace. 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 Fire Gordon Eden. 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 Our city, our city. Our city. Our city. Our city. Our city. Our city. Our city.
We're going to reconvene this meeting as a people's meeting.
That's right.
Come on up if you want to speak.
It's we the people, come down to the podium. It's we the people, not you the government.
I don't need a recorder right now. I am tired of this. Mr. Don Harris, are you okay with having us getting shot down in the street? How could you? How could you be so...
Hold it.
I can't believe it. You guys are annoying what's happening, you see the daily. Can you imagine? If it was one of your children, please don't, don't even go there. Quit sitting on your hands. We need you to be with us or be away, be out.
I'm not representing us.
Please don't watch some more person, because you're shooting us. Every day you're shooting us. You know what? I think you need to be aware that they're shooting women too, nineteen-year-olds, and we're not even sure if they shot her in the back. Did you know there was eighty people, eighty homeless people in jail right this minute that were paying taxpayer money?
Ninety-six dollars!
Again, please understand this needs to change. We need a change now.
Now!
We call Mayor Berry.
We call Mayor Berry.
We call Mayor Berry. We call Mayor Berry. We call Mayor Berry. We call Mayor Berry. We call Mayor Berry. We call Mayor Berry. We call Mayor Berry.
At this time, at this time, we would like to call for the resignation of Councilor Don Harris. We would like to call for the resignation of, of Councilor Brad Winter. Councilor Don Harris purposely stuck Bambi Bullock in there, who was totally partial and biased and supportive of police. He did this for many, many years. He purposely helped to destroy civilian oversight. Don Harris, it's time for you to go.
Go home! Go home! And we would appreciate if you cowards who are running in there, let us remind you that you represent us. We elect you. You should be afraid of the police, not us, okay? We are your constituents, okay? Don't run from us because we're running to you for help. You need to step the fuck up and do something already.
I have concrete recommendations or demands. I want Jonathan Mitchell's murder arrested. Why is he not arrested? What, the lapel videos are going to be released tomorrow for Armand's murder? Where, where's Mary Hawks? Where are the other lapel cameras? We want Eden and Berry fired. Now...
The ABD, the lapel videos are going to be released tomorrow for Armand's murder. Where, where's Mary Hawks? Where are the other lapel cameras? We want Eden and Berry fired. Now...
I still don't know my brother, General Carroll. In the eyes of the police department, we're almost work-stained, we're not even work-stained. And the police department, as well as the government, has shown its inability or either its unwillingness to do whatever is necessary to protect life. So, our contention is, whenever as a people come to a conclusion that the government is unable to support, protect, or have proven that they do not want to protect us, that we ban it to people, because we cannot call ourselves a people unless we stand together for the same issues, because at the end of the day, we are all fighting the same issue. So, with that said, we're here, and we're going to be here today, tomorrow, or the next day, and we're going to stand and fight together, whether you like it or not, and you will respect us.
We're taxpayers too.
I went to school in the nineteen thirties. I remember reading in the Greek Reader about the downside of Germany anti-fascism, and that is where we're headed if we continue to let the police, who are just very similar to what they call the round shirts in Nazi Germany, if they can operate within purity and brightest, and the reason that they're doing just the very same thing that they did in Germany, they choose the other. We choose, they, our police choose the other too. They choose minority members, they choose homeless. We're not homeless, so it's all right if we kill them. If, they choose the mentally ill. Well, we're not mentally ill. Remember, there, you probably don't remember, but there was a minister, the leader of the Nazi regime, who was executed, and he wrote a story, he wrote a letter just before he was executed. He said, "When I, when they first came from the Jews..."
We are having a bad session. We're taking a ten-minute break. There are several people that signed up to speak. Respect the motion, everyone. Sign up to speak. This speaker is not able to attend the meeting, but I would prefer to give people an opportunity to speak. We are...
First, they came from the Jews. I was from the Jews.
Please respect the chamber.
And they came from homosexuals, but I wasn't a homosexual. And then they came from the Jews.
And we've got a meeting to conduct here, please respect the chamber. This is not, President Sanchez, this is no longer, this is no longer what he had. This is no longer your meeting. This is no longer your meeting, this is the people's meeting. This is the mob's meeting, and this is... You can come over here, we have listened. Congressman Sanchez, you have, you have, you have what you have to see right now. This is the people's meeting. If you would like to speak to me, come over here, President Sanchez, and you can join the people. That's been a media parterium on all SWAT activity. Gone. We are here to listen to each and every one of you. No, you have not been listening, and so this is our meeting. There is not democracy in the city without SWAT people in the streets. This is our meeting, and so if you would like to speak, you are welcome to, like everyone else, but you're going to have to come over here and get a line.
I am wearing a black armband tonight as a sign of mourning. I mourn that another resident of Albuquerque has been shot dead by Albuquerque police. I mourn that ABD cannot seem to figure out how to diffuse conflict without using illegal force. Yet again, the person killed was a person of color with a history of mental health issues. Yet again, the residents of Albuquerque saw a paramilitary force respond to a domestic violence call. We year, we year. Shut up! We year to do something on a Monday evening other than...
I am going to...
We would rather take advantage of our cultural activities and our community, just stand on albuquerque2dude.com, but we won't be able to think about having fun until we can watch the news without fear of hearing about another officer-involved shooting. We have asked the police chief to stop the killings, to no avail. We have asked Mayor Berry to stop the killings, but the killings continue. We have asked city council to stop the killings, but the killings continue. We have asked DA Kerry Brendanbrennan to stop the killings, to no avail. We have asked New Mexico Attorney General Derek King to stop the killings, but they continue. I ran to Senator Martin Heinrich, asking what will he do to stop the killings? The DOJ Civil Rights Division has done its job. They concluded ABD has a culture of aggression. Who has the courage to tell ABD to stand down? Will all those city councilors who pledged to help end the killings, please stand up right now and be counted? Will you stand up? And will you use...
Where is Mayor Berry?
Have a respectful respect, people. We have left the soul with me, and we need him.
Will you use the authority over the city's purse strings to stop the community? You have the power to threaten to cut ABD's funding until it establishes a pattern and practice of policing that is constitutional. If you, one more sentence, one more sentence. If you city councilors continue to approve funding for an unconstitutional ABD, doesn't that make you annoying, complicit in their crimes?
I would like to talk my turn. I would like to say that there is need for an audit by the court. And I want, the top salary in 2014 was a police officer, Gray PEO, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Robert Perry gets paid a hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents. As the list goes on, there are eighty salaries that are all police departments.
I want to say something first. I want to say thank you all of you for standing here and actually being brave enough to stand here. I want to say to that woman there, that we are letting everybody talk, and she's being rude and disrespecting everyone. So, if you would please respect everyone and let everyone talk, that'd be great. Let everybody rest, talk, and ABD needs to be shut down.
I'm a Zana, like whoever's an Albuquerque taxpayer voter, and I am tired of spending every other money here trying to figure out who is going to clean up this fucking mess. I'm sorry to use French, but that's the only word that's covered it right now, okay? I'm presenting it with a petition, asking for a grand jury investigation into Mr. Court and the police shooting. We think that it's time to take a drastic intervention. We'd appreciate if you would agree.
Check, 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 one, two, check.
Having seen the integrity of our local tradition, you as leaders need to take responsibility. Keep in mind that we can recall you, and we will.
We have no control this meeting. The public is angry, they're upset, and we've got a lot of official business that needs to be taken through this meeting, but it will not be done this evening, and we've lost total control of this meeting tonight. We had so much on the agenda that involved the Albuquerque Police Department, and unfortunately, those issues will not be recognized.
We're not going away, councilor. So, we suggest that rather than money... We're not going away, councilor. So we suggest a rather than money, you, uh, definitely do something now, like last year.
But again, we're not gonna be able to take care of these issues tonight.
Okay, now, I think we're a lot of different times, and I don't know why, uh, the past is always going the, the, the opinions of the people in the seats always have the opinion.
I mean, this, and they have talked about this. This is the only venue that the public has the point of view.
Mayor Barry is what we're trying to say. It says that we have to have food, and we have to be fine with it, and we have the guts to actually speak to the people directly, that has to be approximately through the, through the media that always contains the status quo that they're trying to say. So what we're trying to do here is make sure that everybody has the right to get heard.
A lot of times, the people who have the microphone, who have the capacity to speak, but again, the purpose of the people here to speak,
we know that the city council has as its main priority, its city budget, and how can they not make a city budget that doesn't go terribly far in APD? But unfortunately, I have to tell the people, and I adjourn the meeting. So, those, those are the, those are the demands. Those are the demands.
I'm not worried about my safety. I'm worried about the safety of the members of the public here tonight, and also the members, members of the council. But again, I just think that we had no, I had no alternative for the safety of the public, for the safety of this council, to adjourn this meeting this evening.
You wish that I'm paying up the cheap, you didn't pay me.
I didn't even know that Chief Edin had left. I know he was here earlier.
Forty-nine percent of the city budget is spent on APD because of all the lawsuits.
I'm not sure what took place, but I think that he has to be the sheriff for his, the, the, but this is really an unfortunate situation.
One of the big jobs of the city council, right now, is the budget, and the city budget, and so we should not be spending forty-nine percent of the city budget on APD.
Well, again, we need to make control of what's going on here at the city hall, at the city hall with the council meeting.